...medical supervision to treat a client's physical symptoms caused by addictions. So that's one level of care. Another level of care is our residential program in which the state licensure for New Jersey, licensed under the Department of Human Services, defines as a treatment program that provides care for the treatment of substance use disorders for 24 or more consecutive hours for two or more clients who are not related to the governing authority or its members by marriage, blood, or adoption. So that's the other, that's the second level of care. We will also be providing outpatient services on our site for outpatient level of care, which is also licensed under the 10-161B for outpatient, inpatient care, or the residential is under 161A. We will also provide a sober living community, which is an important aspect for our continuum of care. The sober living community allows both our patients, families, and other people living in recovery to enjoy living in a community that is a sober living environment. So we'll also be providing that. As far as an overview of our residential program, just to give you an idea of who our patients are, our typical patients are self-pay or are commercially insured. So we are a private company, we are for-profit, we are tax-paying, and our patients are going to be privately insured or privately commercially insured or self-pay, not publicly funded. Our patients are, you know, you and me, they're lawyers, they're doctors, they're nurses, they're professional businesspeople that are seeking help and seeking treatment. Our programming functions 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have staff on-site 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have medical staff there, we have counseling staff, nursing staff. We provide clinical programming throughout the day, throughout the evening. We also have security staff on-site in the evenings to help secure our grounds, to make sure that, you know, everything stays secure. As far as the sober living community, typically in our sober living communities, a lot of people ask about, you know, well, who can be in a sober living community? Or who can afford to be in a sober living community? A sober living community really provides support to people in recovery, their families, loved ones, people that just want to live a sober lifestyle. The rent in those communities typically are about double that of what would be to live in a similar apartment or condominium. So that's one of the things that discourages just from any Joe Schmo who would want to move into a sober living community. We also have written in the lease, very similar to if you would rent an apartment and you can't have pets, we have written in the lease that it is a sober living environment. You can't have any drugs, you can't have any alcohol. And we do periodic testing throughout the community for that, and it would be a breach of your lease, same as if you had a lease that had, you can allow pets and you had a dog. So same kind of thing. So that's a little bit of an overview of our sober living community.
Would you advise the board on the nature of the need, both in the town and the general region? I know you may have touched on it a little bit more detail.
So currently in New Jersey, New Jersey is experiencing, as a whole, and specifically in this area, is experiencing a shortage in inpatient residential beds, outpatient services, and post-treatment housing. Everybody is saying it, you know, just about any state agency you speak to, you know, if you look at other treatment programs in the state, many of the treatment programs have wait lists, including the sober housing communities and houses that exist have wait lists. So it's really overflowing in the system right now. Part of the reason for that, that we're seeing that, not just in New Jersey but across the United States, is the Healthcare Reform Act. More and more people now have access to medical services, mental health services, more and more people now have insurance. So it's overloading the systems somewhat across the United States. We're also, right now, in a heroin epidemic across the U.S. and definitely in New Jersey. So that also is lending to the need. There is a large need for our type of facility.
Would you describe the employment opportunities and any preference of the local employment?
Sure. So we do, when we open up a facility, we do give preference to hiring locally. We do local job fairs, you know, we want to hire local people, we don't want to bring in people, you know, from outside the community, we'd rather hire, you know, from within the community. We also tend to partnership with colleges and universities. And we've been speaking with Camden County Community College, which is across the street. We're going to continue to have conversations with them on an ongoing basis about partnering with them to allow for jobs for people from the community college and also internships from the college.
And the definitions that we talked about under the code and under the licensing statute, are they the same? We talked about the 24 hours, is the exemption of local?
Yes, they are very much the same, pretty much word for word, even down to the marriage, you know, not being part of the governing authority, marriage or bloodline, so.
And utilization of a residential component, that would, it's part of the rehabilitation function to do a discharge plan or a treatment plan? And is part of that discharge plan to assure housing and particularly appropriate housing? And why sober housing, rather than sending people back to the community?
Sure. Yes, so as part of discharging patients from the inpatient residential component of our program, we do a very comprehensive treatment plan for them to re-enter back into their community. You know, what meetings they'll attend, what outpatient services they'll go to, and up to and including housing, where are they going to live? Are they going back home if they have a home? Or is that not a good environment for them to go back to? It may not be. A lot of people choose to live in a sober living environment for, you know, all different reasons. Some reasons are, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, if I'm in recovery, I may not want to be outside in the cul-de-sac tailgating, you know, with kegs of alcohol, because I'm in recovery and I may not want that. So in a sober living community, you have a community where it's, everyone's sober, and they've dedicated themselves to being in that sober living community. So they don't have that fear of having it basically thrown in their face at all times. They can live a sober lifestyle and be supported. And so can families and other people who may not even be in recovery but want to live that sober lifestyle.
The patients who are with you, are they deemed or defined to be disabled under the Americans with Disability Act and Fair Housing Law?
Yes.
And what does that mean?
Under both, it's, both of them have been interpreted over the years and have been modified to include substance use disorders as a disability, and it provides coverage for them under both.
So it's public policy in order to assist them? Assist them in returning to general population?
Assist them into returning to their community.
Okay. The proposal would be to utilize the existing retreat structure with some slight addition? Could you describe that?
Yes.
And we understand we would have to come back with a site plan for that.
So we would make use of the current existing structure. There are many things in the current existing structure which suit us very well. Because it was a dormitory-style building, there's a chapel, there's a dining room, there's a kitchen, so there's a lot of things that suit us that kind of go hand-in-hand with the services we would provide. So there's a lot of aspects of the building that we would use and simply refurbish, and then we would also just add-on to that building for our additional needs.
Do you currently have a definition of what the add-on would be? Would that be new kitchen facility, recreation facility, or, that's not yet defined?
Not yet defined.
But the base of the facility will be used?
Yes.
At the retreat?
Yes.
And your licensure would include state inspection, regular state inspection?
Yes, so in order to get licensure, we have to go through a very rigorous, thorough inspection by state licensure before we can even get licensed. And then, once we are licensed, they come back on an annual basis to inspect the facilities and inspect the clinical programming and make sure that we're still following all the regulations. They also can come back at any time throughout the year unannounced. They have that prerogative, per se. They can do that, they have the free, they have the, you know, obligation that they actually have to do that in the state of New Jersey, that they have to select certain facilities randomly and just show up.
There's medical staff and nursing staff, should we begin in 24 hours a day?
Yes. As I stated, there's, we have medical staff, nursing staff, and counseling staff, and we are staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
The treatment covers roughly seven hours a day?
Our treatment actually covers more than seven hours a day, on average. Our treatment program runs from approximately 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 p.m. at night. And we run clinical programming, groups, activities, therapies throughout the day from 7:00 in the morning till about 10 o'clock at night. We like to keep our patients busy, we like to keep them engaged, you know, we don't like to give them downtime, so we keep them busy all day long.
What's the average stay or the expected stay?
Our average length of stay in our residential program is 30 days. So that's the average length of stay in the residential.
And is there any specific estimate as to, estimate if you will, as to the number of jobs that you would expect to create?
So we will have on staff, if we go with 100 beds, we will have approximately 110 employees on staff. Now, they're divided into many different shifts, you know, shifts that overlap each other, because we have to operate 24/7, you know, it sounds like a lot of employees, a lot of times, but when you break out the shifts, it doesn't increase the traffic really because of the shifts that people work and when people are coming and going. So there are typically four to five different shifts, 7:00 to 3:00 shift, 3:00 to 11:00 shift, and an 11:00, 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. shift, and then there are mid-shifts that overlap some of those shifts, so.
And the, is it consistent with the tendency residential component to be a continuum of care? Although there's no constraint on the nature of the units, it's a sober living location and the nature of transition, is there any ongoing treatment, any ongoing programming?
Yes. So in the whole continuum of care, we found that patients are more successful if they continue within the continuum of care, if they go from an inpatient setting into an outpatient setting and attend outpatient services, and then continue into like a sober living community or a sober living environment, and take part in AA meetings, NA meetings, have community education, which, you know, we'll be able to provide to the sober living community. So we find that the success rates are much higher if they're engaged for a longer period of time within the whole continuum of care.
The patients that you see as they, as they go through treatment are deemed by the statutes you refer to as handicap. And can you indicate to the board, or would you reflect to the board, that these patients have a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits their life activities?
Yes. If you're diagnosed with an addiction diagnosis, under the ACM criteria or under the DSM, you are diagnosed as having a mental health disorder. So addiction diagnosis now falls under mental health disorders. As we also know, a lot of people who suffer from the disease of addiction, and it is a disease, also have a lot of medical conditions and medical complications that come along with it from using substances over a period of time. You know, it causes, you know, a certain amount of medical problems on your physical body.
So with that, there is a record of the impairment, is that accurate?
Yes.
And from that, the patient is regarded as having such an impairment?
Correct.
You may guess that you gave me a lot of these questions to ask. So the, and you link treatment both to the rehabilitation function but also the sober housing function?
Yes, it's the full continuum of care, from inpatient treatment, residential treatment, to outpatient services, and attending group and outpatient, on to living in a sober living environment.
And by having it on the single campus, and that is the intent, is that correct?
Yes.
By having on a single campus, you're fostering sobriety and encouraging trust and rivalry?
Yes.
The need for rehabilitation then carries over to the discharge, and that's the function of the residential component, but again, not solely for discharged patients from rehabilitation facilities?
Correct. Families, loved ones, other people that may want to live in a sober living environment.
And in fact, are the families part of the treatment?
Yes. But part of our model is to be a community-based model of care, and family services is one of the most important functions in treating addictions. You can't just treat a single person in addictions, you have to treat the family. So, you know, our family services program, doing family therapy, engaging the family in the treatment is a huge component, and it makes for success for the patient.
Are you aware of other sober living communities in the, in the general area?
Not in the general area.
Even in the Camden County or Los Angeles area?
No.
Is there any impact, negative impact from that type of a community?
Not that I can think of.
The, there is a benefit, is there a benefit in bringing the family, the patient into a neighborhood and having family there and living on this type of a campus set?
Yeah, it provides them a support system by having them in a community, having the family right there, having loved ones right there, it provides them a full community to go back to. Part of the reintegration of a patient who comes into treatment is, if you go into treatment for 30 days, you're away from your normal environment for 30 days. And so then, when you re-enter that environment, it's a shock to the system. You know, you're going back to work at your full-time job, you're going back to your family, to your friends, to your social activities. So the transition into a sober living environment and being able to have a lot of those things there, it just makes the transition so much easier for our patients.
So in part, what we're asking the board to consider is a reasonable accommodation for this type of use, both the rehabilitation, residential rehabilitation itself, as well as a component for general housing, sober living housing. We're asking the board to make that kind of an accommodation in order to assist both these patients and those who don't want to become patients?
Correct.
Okay. And that would provide an equal housing opportunity if they had that type of a facility?
Correct.
Both the rehab and the, and the living pieces?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's it, if there's, sorry. Do the board members have any questions?
Can you just go into a little bit more into the sober living? Like, is this an apartment complex?
Yeah, normally there are apartments and condominiums and townhomes.
And this would be separate from what you already have?
That's correct.
And is it my understanding that this project is to be residential? That this project is to be residential, but by tendency, it'll be rented and sold?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be rented.
What would be the typical lease time of someone that would they, would they live there for years and years and years, or?
Typically, yes. We do, we normally do, we'll start them out with a six-month lease and then move to a year lease, you know, as they become a member of the community. You know, the six months is kind of like a trial period, you know, which a lot of, you know, if you rent an apartment, a lot of regular apartments do the same thing. They do a six-month lease and then, you know, will jump up to a year lease, so.
And are you subject, I thought I heard you mention somewhere that you're subject to a, either urine test or revelizer?
Yes. Yes, randomly.
Condition you set?
And that's a condition of your lease, of your rental lease.
And off the door, they test?
We normally test weekly, we'll select, you know, members of the community, you know, to test.
And then what would be the consequences if, say, a urine dump?
They would be evicted from the sober living community. It's, it's much the same as if you're renting an apartment and you're not supposed to have a pet, and the landlord finds you with a dog, and they're like, hey, you got to get out because you have a dog.
Along with that, they always, they always tell you, you got 10 days to get rid of the dog or urine dump.
Yeah. There's no 10 days to get rid of anything.
Either you're clean or you're out the door.
Yeah.
And that's critical for the entire community. Mr. Chair? Is this, you said there's a certain hours you're going to be open and available. Is this a 24-hour treatment center?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you're open all the time?
Yeah, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, so then, will this encompass the whole 140 acres of the property?
No. No.
But if we fill it eventually, we have the rooms or apartments and stuff?
Correct. So, and the 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that the facility will be open and staffed is the residential component of the facility.
I appreciate the question, I think Larry, we should answer that in this testimony, that as you see the plan, quite small, but as you see the plan in front of you but also the exhibit, this 140 acres has enormous amounts of weapons and weapons buffer, which obviously will not only be retained, but that will also keep the landscaping, the tree scape within that, within that protected area. So that was, and as you see, Larry, this map, that bisects the track. So it very much protects the rear properties and really brings the, brings the site forward to achievement mode. I'm not suggesting on the roadway, but it's the front path that you have to be able to construct continuous with rehabilitation. Doesn't mean there aren't other uses in the back acreage, but as Larry already indicated, there's very little up listed on the property. So it really does shrink the 140 to be significantly open space. And doing the intake of the patients, so to speak, is there any requirement, like, does they have a criminal background?
So what we normally do is we screen through an assessment process. If, we don't allow any sex offenders, registered sex offenders into the program, so we do screen for that, and we do an assessment process that screens for that. So, other than that, I mean, that's basically what we do. We don't do, obviously, we don't do criminal background checks on every single patient. You know, that breaks their confidentiality, you know, a lot of our patients, they're professionals, they want to come in with a certain amount of anonymity. You know, they don't want general population necessarily knowing that they're entering treatment and...
And I don't have an issue with that, but I know that in school system, I have a thing called gate guard, and what happens with, lobby guard, I'm sorry, lobby guard, what happens is, it's, you're coming into the facility, before you get buzzed in the building, you run your license through the back of the building. It all comes up as a green light or a red light. And if it's a red light, right now, which currently sets just for sex offenders, if you can provide violent offenders, drug addicts, whatever you wanted, you just pay for an additional service. That's something that the person at the door doesn't get to find out what you're being denied for. We only get to know that you're denied. So as far as anonymity, I mean, there are plenty of ways to set up anonymity. One of the concerns that I have would be a violent offender. I don't want to bring armed robbers, you know, like, gosh, we have enough of them at our home run. We don't need the government to give them to us.
Yeah, and...
Violent offenders, you know, I can walk into the wall wall, I just drive right around the corner, and I don't want to get mobbed in a parking lot because I won't give somebody five bucks.
Yeah, and what we do is, we do screen for those things. So we do an assessment process, we ask hundreds of questions, both of them, their family members, we pull records if they've ever been in treatment anywhere before, including a hospital, we pull those records. So those are all things that we use to determine whether they're eligible to be admitted.
I'm sure some of the patients might have a record, because when you're on drugs, you steal to feed your addiction and...
And some of the patients may have DUIs.
When I thought about armed robbery, you know, that violent stuff, violent stuff, not just any crime.
Yeah, so we, so we are not a court-mandated program, so that's one thing that we're not. There are court-mandated programs out there. There are court-mandated programs out there that mandate patients into treatment, that have committed crimes like armed robbery, you know, severe crimes, even if they have to do with their addiction, and they're mandated to go into treatment. And the court at that point says to the person, you will go into treatment and here's where you're going. And they actually assign them to a treatment location that is a court-mandated treatment location, because they have communication, two-way communication with that treatment facility. And we are not a court-mandated treatment facility. We do not accept public funding, so patients on Medicare, Medicaid, our patients are self-pay, you know, between $25,000 to $30,000 a month to come into our program, and they're commercially insured. So they have Cigna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, things like that.
So I guess to put all the record that you will not take any court-mandated or violent offenders?
We will not take any court-mandated offenders as we're not a court-mandated program. They may have, I can, what I can say for violent is, we do an assessment, you know, we don't do a criminal background check. No place I've ever worked has done a criminal background check on patients coming into treatment. So if it's not given up in the assessment process or found out about in the assessment process, then there is no way that we would know.
If it's found out, would they be denied?
Correct. If it's found out, they're denied.
Basically, all that's...
They're denied.
And if it's found out while they're there, it'll be excluded?
If it's found out while they're there...
If they exhibit violent behavior?
Oh, if they exhibit violent behaviors, I mean, that's part of our, our treatment program is, you know, living in the community, you can't exhibit any kind of violent behaviors. If you exhibit any kind of violent behaviors, we will call 911, you know, if it's towards another person or a staff member, and you'll be discharged from the program. And, you know, we will escort you via our black car service, you know, to your home.
Like I said, it's a recovery program, it's not cheap. Basically, on the road to recovery, someone could get together with their family again and live there.
Absolutely. In the sober living community, absolutely.
What do you anticipate the sober living community rentals will do?
The sober living community rentals are, average normally are about double what you would pay for an average, like apartment or condominium. So in this area, I'm guessing they're probably, from what I've seen, around 1,500, 1,800 for an apartment in this area, in the, you know, good areas of town or the county. So it would be approximately $3,000 to $4,000 to rent in the sober living community. Yeah, so it's, it's not cheap.
And not giving them permanent?
No. Not cheap.
Maybe that's why we can't take governmental stock to children. Also, I'd like you to speak to security, but in finalizing that question, what do you, what caliber of treatment, and I don't mean the medical treatment, what caliber of facility can you look toward with that kind of a payment?
Yeah, so our facility is very high-end. You know, with the amenities being high-end, the accommodations being high-end, you know, if someone's going to pay that amount of money or even come through their commercial insurance to enter treatment, it'll be a high-end facility. We offer the latest in evidence-based treatment and care to our patients. We do have a robust security program. We have cameras that'll be located throughout the facility, inside the facility, and or along the exterior of the facility. We also alarm the doors, we alarm the windows, so that way, if it's, you know, after hours, after lights out, if they're, you know, are trying to sneak out the window to go rendezvous with a girlfriend, an alarm will sound. We also, our staff perform hourly headcounts, where they physically account for every one of our patients on an hourly basis, to make sure that we have everybody and everybody's there. If patients want to leave our facility, again, we're not court-mandated, they're not locked in, they, they are welcome to leave at any time, they are checking themselves into treatment. If they want to leave, they simply come to us and say, I want to leave treatment, and we say, okay, would you like us to drive you home via our black car? Or would you like to... like to call a family or a loved one? And we either call the family or loved one member for them to come pick them up, or we take them home ourselves in the black car.
Where are your other facilities? Where do you have other facilities?
Currently, we do not have any other facilities operational, so...